Call the city council work session order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Here.
Echo Angeli?
Here.
Vining?
Here.
Lamoore?
Here.
Felder?
Mayor Clerk?
Here.
Mr. Pestu, I know you have several items on the work session for this evening, so if you would start with where you're at, sir.
Honorable Mayor, Council, good evening. We wanted to come back and follow up and circle back on discussion that we had last year. I can't remember what time of year it was last year. This has been quite the ongoing project for all of us that are working on possibly finding a site for a dog park in the city. But you'll remember Kathy Russo and I, with the Community Foundation of Monroe County, came and presented an idea about a potential dog park location in the Mason Run neighborhood behind the current education center, the former multi-sports complex on the west side of the railroad tracks on Noble. At that time, we were just seeking feedback from council before we moved further in trying to raise additional funds to construct not only the dog park, but also raise funds for maintenance endowment. And I wanted to come and update you on the discussions that have occurred since then. As you know, there is a fund at the Community Foundation of Monroe County set aside for a dog park. There were discussions quite some time ago. I can't recall how long, how many years it was. But working with a group of citizens who were raising funds for a dog park with a proposed location at Mason Run. And so we had started looking at some alternative sites closer to the downtown and the central business district for, with the idea in mind that the residents in those neighborhoods have smaller yards and make it a little easier to walk your dog to. And so we have, we've explored several sites. And at that time, council asked us for two things. First, to meet with the Humane Society of Monroe County about their proposed ideas for their new shelter in Frenchtown Township that, that at that time, we understood included a dog park of some sort. And also to have a conversation with the Mason Run Neighborhood Homeowner Association. So we did both of those. We met with the Humane Society. I want to say it was last summer. They had a new director in place and we, we went to talk about their new facility, their planned facility in Frenchtown Township. They more or less gave us their blessing and said, continue planning a dog park in the city if you'd like. They viewed theirs as serving more northern Monroe County and quite a bit off in terms of construction and raising funds to actually break ground, nothing immediate. And so they didn't really see a conflict or competition. If there was another dog park located in the city of Monroe that would serve Monroe Township, the city, Frenchtown, and also possibly Raisinville Township. We also met with the Mason Run Homeowner Association. I would say they had some significant concerns about a possible dog park being located in their neighborhood. Concerns included possible noise, increased activity, taking away residential area that could be set aside for new residential neighborhood to complete the development in their neighborhood. And then also the concern about animal waste and again, the sound of barking dogs. And so we didn't really get a very good reception and a lot of positive feedback from them. And so we started exploring at least five other sites across the city where we looked at areas that were either city-owned or publicly owned or with some other partner organizations. We talked to DT about their property on North Dixie next to their large storage facility, the big concrete building on North Dixie. They weren't really open to that conversation. We also talked to the county about Heck Park on North Dixie Highway, thinking it would be an amenity that could serve travelers who are staying at the hotels with their pets. The county didn't see it as a compatible use with a park that has significant, or, I'm trying to think of the word, dedication for veteran uses, I suppose, and not really compatible use. And so we also looked at Rossler Field and had a conversation with Monroe Public Schools about possibly setting aside some area near the water tower for a dog park. That wasn't very well received by the school board. And so we also looked at some YMCA property behind the Prometica Rehab Facility, the former Farmer Jack that they own that's in the flood plain right on the riverbanks. It's very wet property. It would be very costly to clear and so it wasn't very efficient and it was cost prohibitive. So with all of those, the alternatives that we explored, I feel like we're out of alternatives. We haven't found any other sites across the city that we could possibly look at. And so before we spend any time and energy on this, we wanted to come back to council and I guess find out if Munson Park is officially off the table. What are our options moving forward? Should we continue looking for other sites? I will say the donors to the fund at the Community Foundation are anxious now that the funds have been sitting there for years to either spend them or donate them to another like cause. And so we're really seeking direction from council on how much more time and energy we could expend, we should expend on this.
Comments for Mr. Cochran? Ryan?
Yes.
Munson Park, you say that's, that's off the table or it was off the table?
No, that's, that's what we're asking. So originally it was, there was some agreement with the city council at the time, several years ago, about having one at Munson Park. That was before we programmed and did the master plans for the different parks in the past couple of years that don't call for an area for a dog park at Munson. And so if that's something we should revisit and take a look at, do you want us to do that? Should we possibly plan? I will say there is less than $20,000 in the account with the Community Foundation and the estimate that we had from Jim Jacobs Architect on the dog park was at least 80 to construct it, not including a maintenance endowment so that that doesn't fall on city resources to make sure that it's clean to maintain. So.
I think it's good to investigate and see if it's worthwhile putting it into the park plans at Munson. But in the end of the day, if it, if it's not feasible, then that's, that's going to be the death knell to it, I think.
Well, comments, questions, remarks? Paul?
Do they, how do they plan to get the funds to keep it going?
So it would be a significant capital campaign in doing fundraising, not only construct it, but also there was discussion that the city should make sure that there is a maintenance endowment in place before construction starts so that that is in place to continue. Any revenue that's raised off that endowment will go to paying the cost of the long-term maintenance for the dog park so that that doesn't even spread thin or our resources in our Parks and Rec Department or DPS.
I would just like to add a comment that I know many people that have been waiting a long time for this and people that were invested in getting the funding together. And I think we should come up with some kind of a answer for them.
Yeah, that's, that's really what we're looking for tonight because if, if, if we say that there's not a location that's suitable for it in the city and that's okay, then the Community Foundation is looking into another like cause that's related to animal welfare and care that those funds would be donated to with the wishes of some of the prominent donors and the board of the Community Foundation.
And one more question. Do you see anything, any reason why that Munson Park would not be a good spot for a dog park?
If I may just follow up on it, I think, one, there was a pretty extensive planned program for that park and it just didn't fit into it. And I think the other compelling reason is, you know, it would require a pretty extensive campaign to generate the necessary funds and plus the operating costs associated with it as well. So, and I'll be honest with you, my recommendation is much of a good faith effort has been made to find a location in the city. I wouldn't be overly optimistic that we could still find it in light of all the other projects that we have going forth. I think we just need to be upfront and honest that maybe the best thing is to find a like type of donation to, with those, with the donations provided for the dog park, so.
So my other question is, is there, can we pass this on to a township or does the money have to stay in the city?
Well, the fund, the fund with the Community Foundation was established that a dog park would be established in the city. So that would have to be amended. I will say, you know, the, the dog park could be a great amenity for our residents and other visitors and the like. I think what we're significantly running into, if it's not Munson Park, is the old NIMBY adage that, you know, people think dog parks are great, but nobody wants it in their neighborhood. And we've had a very tough time trying to find it somewhere else. Sort of my thought of moving it away from Munson Park was a lot of the residential areas on the west side of the city have a little bit larger yards. I'm not saying that they're expansive by any means, but as you get into the downtown, as you get into the eastern part of the city, the yards are smaller. And so there's not a lot of room for, for dogs to run. And so that's why we were trying to look more toward the other side of town as opposed to Munson Park too, in addition to the fact that the, the park plans were done and it didn't include space for a dog park unless we go back and revisit those, which would be the pleasure of city council.
Thank you.
John?
Your Honor, we had this conversation a couple of years ago and it's, 20,000 is, it, it, a dog, Jim Jacobs is right. You're talking 80 to 100,000 dollars to construct a good one, then you're talking about the ongoing maintenance. And then you've got to talk about who's going to manage it because part of a dog park is that people that go to the dog park have to show that their animals have been vaccinated.
Right.
So somebody's got to look at all the paperwork before they, they issue, you know, I don't know if, I don't think, a lot of places are using magnetic cards to get in. So somebody's got to manage that. And I don't think, I know two years ago, that hadn't been even thought about yet, what agency was going to do all that.
There had been some discussion with Animal Control about when you go and license your dog, you could, kind of like what you do with the state parks where you buy the recreation passport and you get into the state park when you renew your license plate. Working with Animal Control that when you vaccinate your dog or license your dog, you show the vaccination, you get the key fob if you pay a membership, which then goes into the maintenance fund. No, nothing was ever finalized with Animal Control. It was just preliminary discussions at that point for, for those purposes. I'll say the other, if I may, one, one last comment. I had a resident stop in my office, I think it was last fall, and talked about some concerns he had about animals that were running without a leash at Munson Park and talked to him about park rules and reporting that. But he said, why doesn't the city have a dog park? And I invited him to have a seat and talked to him about all the challenges that we've run into with the dog park. You know, it's not just a fenced in area. You have to have two acres, one side for big dogs, small dogs, one side open at a time, one side closed at a time, so it doesn't turn into a mud pit, making sure dogs are vaccinated. And it kind of blew his mind that it would cost 80,000 dollars, but he, he said, I never thought all this would go into a dog park. I guess the other, the other thing is when we did the National Citizen Survey last year, that was one of the things we asked our residents is, is a dog park a priority in the city? And it was 11% of residents rated it as, as a high priority. So, you know, take that for what it's worth as well.
Other questions or comments? So it, it does go back since we've had the conversation in past councils and then in the, the upfront proposal was Munson Park, which I didn't have a problem with then or now. But I think the bigger issue is the funding and the sustainability. And there's not, clearly not enough revenue now. And I know they're not, at least the group that started this isn't out campaigning for capital funds to do it. I'm not sure how they would get it now as well. The items that were brought up about how it operates and the cards and that, we've seen them. I've been to the one in Toledo and others and they function well, but they still are within a system to be sure that it's managed with the rules that are posted. They go through a licensing process for the vaccination and do that upfront. But even with that, you have the transition areas besides just the open areas, they've put in the wash areas. There's a lot to it. So, you know, the, the donors that put the money with the Community Foundation specifically wanted a dog park and maybe they have other thoughts as well. I look at Munson Park as an example and some of our other parks. We have pet owners that walk their dogs and walk them on leash and walk them on the path as well as other items. There's other amenities beyond, not to the extent of a dog park that might be accommodating, that might be agreeable to the donors. While it's not a dog park, we, we talk about the, you know, the water stations and we have water fountains for humans, but you see the ones where they also have at the bottom, kind of the one that's by the west side fire station along that line. You know, is that something that they may be agreeable to to keep it within the, if they want to stay, some accommodations for pet owners and the pets, especially the hot days in the summer that might be there? I, I don't know because there's, there's a, there's a pathway around Munson Park and it's long. By the time you get back around, if you're not getting water right then or you're not taking it, you know, maybe that's going to satisfy at least that option. It's not, it's not a free running dog within a dog park, but at the same time, it's leashed and still can use the trails in the back and still come out and have a, a station in between. I, because that, that path as well as the back area cross right there. And maybe that's, maybe some meeting area, a sitting area, a water station for the dogs because that, maybe that's be agreeable. It's not a dog park, I understand, but at least it's something. That's my first thought.
Your Honor, I think, I think, I think the mayor's on to something. You can be a dog-friendly community without having a dog park, but it's just having the facilities to, to cater to them. I like the idea of having more, more fountains for them, especially in the summer when they're out walking.
I could see one at St. Mary's. I know we have the one fountain there for, for, you know, humans and walkers. But, you know, having an associative dog fountain and that, have it out at Munson as well. Because I see a lot of people walking there and maybe there's another area, another park that is on the list that we think about that. Which park is used most frequently by those that have their pets that they walk, their dogs? And, and see if that's agreeable to them. I'd hate to see their revenue not achieve something in relation to being, as, as John says, you know, really dog and pet friendly within the city because I think we are. It's just, it's not enough money. It isn't, you're going to be 80 to 100,000 if you're going to do it correctly and it's just not there.
Opportunity for the waste stations with the bags.
The bags, yeah. We have those now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Just a thought, maybe something to see if that's accommodating. If not, they, it appears they might have another interest elsewhere that the, the funds service have. The funds that are there that you've mentioned would accommodate some of those other amenities that would be improvements for the community. Andrew?
Thank you, sir. In your discussions with Community Foundation, they, they know that there's a cost barrier there and I don't, I'm personally not opposed to having a dog park and not opposed to having it in Munson Park. Have you heard anything else from, from the adjoining neighborhood in terms of, hey, I really don't want this here?
Not the adjoining neighborhood to Munson, no.
I don't know what you'd find there. I don't even know if it's worth looking if, if the money isn't on the table. Do you anticipate that if you went back to the Community Foundation, say, hey, you know, we're kind of open to doing this, but if the cost remains a barrier, we can't, we can't foot the whole bill? And I mean, if it's from small donations, 60,000 plus is a big lift. So I'm wondering, it's like, okay, we, we see your commitment here, but if you're willing, you know, I don't know what the willingness is. But if we could get to this point, you know, that would remove some barriers.
I think some message.
I would not be opposed to amending the, the plan for Munson personally. Other council people might have a different opinion.
Your Honor, I'll comment on that, I do, because the plan, the master plan for Munson Park was, was based on community, was based on community input. So the stakeholders that use the park and other residents came and they commented and a dog park was not a high priority. They wanted more recreational activities. That's one of the few parks that we have, we have sport activities at. People didn't want two acres, they didn't want to take up two acres in the front of the park for a dog park. So, I mean, that's the reason why it's not on the master plan, it's because of the community, the community feedback.
Michelle, and then I think we need you, Boa.
He just said what I was going to say.
Awesome timing. All right. Thank you.
Direction and feedback.
I think so, yep. Next item, Your Honor, is just an update regarding the River Raisin Battlefield National Park Education and Welcome Center?
Yeah.
And Mark, you stay up there.
Education and Visitor Center. Welcome Center.
Yeah, there you go.
We're all welcoming.
I'm going to shut out of my agendas. Go ahead.
So it's been a while before we, since we've been in front of city council to really give a comprehensive battlefield update. But particularly, we wanted to touch on, A, how the year ended for the national park and give some statistics on how many visitors visited as well as the economic impact that we've seen with the national park since it was established. But also update you on how construction is going at the former multi-sports complex, trying to get everyone to start saying education center, as well as some other updates. And so Scott Bentley, as well as Chief Ted from the Battlefield Foundation are here tonight. And Scott's going to briefly go through a lot of this and then we've got some other comments at the end. So I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. It's actually a pleasure to be back. It's been a long time since I've actually been here to give an update and it's hard to believe we're in the 10th anniversary year of the establishment of the park, which of course, I haven't been here quite 10 years yet because that will come in January of next year. But this is my ninth year and you all were celebrating the establishment of the park long before I arrived. And so, and it's also hard to believe I've been here that long. So as Mark talked about, we're going to run through some data, I think you have it in front of you, about visitation since the park opened in this past year and then talk about updates. We're excited that lots is going on right now at the park in addition to visitation. So I'll jump right into it. Since we've opened and the park service arrived, over 1.2 million people have visited the park. As you'll notice, the last couple of years, visitation actually has had a slight decline. Part of that has been extended government shutdowns and adverse weather kind of combined. And so this year, we're expecting it to go the other direction because we're thrilled that we won't be having a government shutdown this year and we're hopeful that we'll actually have better weather. But we're still pretty steady, over 200,000 visitors a year for the last, you know, really four years. School field trips continue to climb up and so we've actually capped that and that's why the number hasn't gone up real steadily, just, just under 10,000. We're excited when the new education center opens that that number will go up. Michigan State University, of course, projected back when we did the River Raisin Heritage Corridor East Master Plan that we would hit about 100,000. Right now, we have to put up tents, so you probably all have noticed in the spring and in the fall, tents go up all over the battlefield to accommodate the, the students that we have. And then this time of year, it really drops off because we haven't had the interior space to do field trips. But, you know, those are going fantastic and growing. Whoops, helps if I hit the right button. Our kayak explorer program continues to be fairly steady. You can see it peaked in 2016. The last couple of years, because of high water conditions and algae blooms, we've actually dropped off. We've had to cancel several programs. We actually relocated it this past year down here to Monroe, which was fantastic up at the Huron River. We couldn't get underneath the bridges anymore because of the water levels being so high. We ran it, this summer, as you know, we had a slow start because Helenberg Park was flooded. We couldn't even access the launch and then we ended up with the algae bloom late in the year. So we kind of had a condensed year, but we still saw over 803 kids participate in that full day program. Economically, you know, based on three different models, the park continues to generate between about nine and 12 million dollars a year in regional economic benefit. The three different models, we did the, the one model when we did the River Raisin Heritage Corridor East Master Plan. And then there are two other national park models that are used that are based on visitation. The local model that was done by Michigan State, I think, has the most credibility because it actually drove down into our visitor zip code data and actual spending trends. And so, but since the park service arrived, somewhere between 51 and 64 million dollars is the regional economic benefit of the park. That translates into about 141 jobs that are supported regionally. Most of those jobs are in the service industry and it's about a $4 million a year, you know, addition to the labor market, which is a fantastic thing. When we look at the park, we would not function without our volunteers. And I can't say enough about the amazing people here in Monroe County and this region and actually all over southeast Michigan. We have folks that drive as far as Jackson to come here to volunteer and support the national park. This past year, we had just a tremendous outpouring of volunteer support, which tabulated to a value from the National Park Service perspective of just under a million dollars. Since opening, we've actually had 187,955 hours contributed by volunteers from all walks of life and backgrounds, helping with field trips to electricians and, and you name it. Of course, the, the value of that is, you know, over $4 million to the national park. But what amazes me is it's the equivalent of 92 years of full-time work that has been donated to the park since we opened. And so I always like to, to thank our volunteers publicly and some of you have been able to come to our annual volunteer appreciation dinner and some of the functions. But we just have some tremendous citizens that really make the battlefield possible. From the National Park Service perspective, if you all remember, when, when I first arrived, we actually didn't have a budget and we, we struggled and fought and tried to get funding. And I'm pleased to report that now we have a steady base funding of about just over 800,000 dollars a year. Since the national park arrived, in base operating dollars, over 5 million dollars has come to the community. And I remind folks, that's like leveraging, you know, a new almost million dollar a year business into your community. And all of those, you know, salary dollars and all are used and kept right here locally. And so again, our base, you know, funding for this year going into '20, is it about the same? We've, we've maintained a steady pace. And so, you know, during the time that we opened the park, it was in one of the most difficult financial times that our country had seen in some time. We actually defeated the odds and while other national parks were going down, we continued to go up and we're continuing to maintain. We hope to increase, you know, obviously in the future as well, but we're thrilled to be where we're at. Project dollars are similar. We've had a pretty consistent ability to leverage National Park Service project dollars to the community. Our biggest year, of course, was the National Park Centennial when we kicked off the Battlefield Filming Project, which will be coming to a conclusion this year and will debut in the new theater at the education center. But as you can see, over the last few years, you know, really anywhere from 150 to over 200,000 dollars a year comes from the National Park Service here to the community in various projects. This is a chart to give you idea on special funding that comes to the park. And actually, we put this together for Lazy Boy who asks us, you know, where is your money coming from? And you don't have the privilege of the maps up, but the charts actually speak pretty well. And so since, since opening, over 11.4 million dollars has come to the battlefield from a variety of sources and locations. This does not include National Park Service base operating dollars, by the way. Most of this is philanthropic or state grant and those types of things. Most of this is coming from outside of Monroe County. So only 20% of the, you know, dollars actually come, well, I'm sorry, 80% of the dollars come from within the state of Michigan, but only 13% come from within Monroe County. And so, and actually, 20% of our dollars, over 2.2 million, have come from all across the United States. And so if you get a chance to come over and get a sneak preview of the education center with me, I'll actually show you some maps and show you all of the states from across the country that various foundations and philanthropic organizations have contributed to the battlefield. And so. So where are we at with the education center? Well, I'm thrilled to tell you it's really loud and noisy to work in there right now. Construction is underway. If you drive past the education center, you'll see all sorts of. If you drive past the education center, you'll see all sorts of trucks out there and dumpsters, and the renovations are in full force and are underway. And so, again, happy to give you all a pre-tour, if you'd like to see, you know, the progress and how things are taking shape there. We're focusing primarily on the visitor center, which will be shared with the Monroe County Convention and Tourism Bureau, so the main lobby area is the main focus, as well as the South Arena, trying to get ready for some spring commitments that we have. Likely, we'll have a phased opening, because the theater will take some extra time. Oops, I should probably talk a little bit about the outside. You can see the Godfrey, using a pointer doesn't really help, but you can see the, the outline of the proposed Godfrey Bougaron claim. We did begin working with the city and the University of Michigan Field Archaeological Program this summer, doing some archaeological surveys around the proposed construction of the barn, as well as along the proposed areas of the fence lines. And so, and those reports are being finalized right now, and will be forthcoming, and I know we're still waiting on the due care plan, not the due care plan, the finished Phase Two for the environmental of that work, before we finalize and present proposals as to what we're actually going to do. Our, our hope is to present to you that we'll be breaking ground with your permission on the barn, which has been funded through the generosity of DTE Foundation sometime this spring. And so, more to come on that, and happy to take questions on it as well. This is the layout, and I apologize that, you know, I sent the file over to Mark, and he said apparently I encrypted it some way, where he couldn't print it in color. I color-coded it just to kind of make it easier for walking through tonight and talking about the areas that we're working on. I mentioned the main lobby, you know, that will be a shared regional visitor center with the National Park Service and the Monroe County Convention and Tourism Bureau. Their offices will be on the south end of that main lobby as well, and so we'll be promoting not just the national park, but also all, you know, Monroe County attractions, you know, through that new visitor center. There'll be exhibits on the south side of the lobby, and then on the north side will be gift shop in some seating classroom-type areas. We're working on some revenue generating things for the purple area, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit. The green area is a library, it's actually a branch of the Monroe County Library System that is a battlefield special collection that will be made available to the public for the first time, so we're really excited about that. I've been working closely with the Monroe County Library System for the last year and a half, cataloging everything into their system. Part of it is actually live now, but folks won't be able to actually access it until we finish this this spring. And so, that's where our special collections and library will be located. The white area is the new stadium-style theater, it's 143-seat theater with Dolby surround sound. We're finishing up the Four Park Films. Those will be debuted when we open the theater. Likely, the theater will open later than the main visitor center, primarily because of, you know, all of that seating is actually being custom-made, because it's a curved seating. Literally, every seat is a different size, and so the lead time on the seating takes a little bit longer, and so that will likely, again, be later in the summer when we open that. The blue area on the north is Phase One of the education center. We've been working with teachers from across Monroe and Wayne Counties for the last three years on exhibit development. Eventually, of course, your goal is to fill the entire area, we have an exhibit planned for the entire space, but the Phase One includes, you know, things like a wigwam, French construction, trading posts, you know, various components of, you know, telling the story of the lead-up to the battles and the aftermath. Everything is tied to Michigan's new content expectations and standards, and includes both STEM, as well as social studies and history. And so, you know, again, all of the exhibits actually have been designed by educators. ProMedica Hospital generously gave us a grant that's funding a lot of that, as well as other philanthropic contributions that have come in, and so we're excited about that. The purplish area, or the South Arena area, all we're really doing in there is, is getting a facelift, and so we're painting out the ceiling black, and so actually, if you go in right now, there's, you know, they're cleaning all of that and prepping it for painting. The painting will actually begin this week, and then the walls are all getting repainted as well, so it'll change the look of that. And then the floor is being resurfaced in there, so it'll be able to be used for events, and it is event venue in that space. The lobby itself, actually, won't look like you're walking into a sports arena anymore when you go in, and so all of that industrial feel is going away, gypsum board is replacing all of the cinder block, the floor is being redone, and all the finishes are being done, the lights are all changing out, and so it'll be an entirely different experience. And the shared information desk is kind of right underneath where the skylights are at, and it's a information desk that will be, again, shared with the Convention and Tourism Bureau. The restrooms are also totally being redone and fixed up to, again, not feel like a sports complex, and so... Other amenities that we're adding, there is a, you know, a parents' room, you know, if there's your nursing mothers and those kinds of things, there's wheelchair lifts, everything is ADA accessible, so for the new theater, you know, there's a new lift that goes in for that, you know, coat closet rooms and things like that, that you would expect going to a museum-type setting. You know, obviously, the, you know, the partners, your huge partner is you, the City of Monroe, it wouldn't be possible without the generosity and the support of the City of Monroe in the building itself. The River Rays and National Battlefield Park Foundation, of course, the Monroe County Convention and Tourism Bureau, and then the National Park Service are really the operating partners of the facility. New exhibits, I kind of hit on it a little bit, there's a couple pictures up there. The wigwam is actually constructed and up, we finished that, the materials were harvested, and it was traditionally built by a team of native experts here in the state of Michigan, and the construction of that finished in December. We were very honored to receive a birch bark canoe from the Minnesota Chippewa, the Grand Portage Band, you know, built and provided, along with the Grand Portage National Monument, a birch bark canoe for us. We'll be building an elm bark canoe and a dugout canoe with native youth this June, is a part of the journey towards understanding, and so we're excited about that. The French construction example is up in the facility as well, which you don't see. Al's Cabinets, if you've ever heard of them, here in Monroe County are doing a lot of the cabinet construction for us, we're excited to be working with them. And so you can see the diorama, you know, that's under construction as well up there. You know, the trading post is under construction, we have numerous wampum exhibits in varieties of different things. The Godfrey claim, I hit on it just, you know, just briefly. You, again, we'll be coming back before you to present more details as the environmental work is completed. We get the Michigan, University of Michigan Archaeological Report back in, but it appears preliminarily, archaeologically, we'll be cleared to propose the construction of the barn. We actually located the original ledger that told, tells us actually what was sold and handled out of there, which will be used then, of course, to outfit the barn. And so we're excited about that. Of all places, it's at the Hayes Presidential Library. Since, you know, really early last summer, in the, in the May timeframe, the foundation began to work on a business plan, looking at revenue generation tools that could be used, that are in harmony with the park's mission and the story. A series of five different revenue generation ideas were vetted through that business plan. This list, two of them up here, there are really three, you know, key things that the foundation is looking at implementing. The first is the Michigan Wine and Pop Portal, and basically, this is a shared tasting room. Michigan's wine industry started here in southeast Michigan, of course, with the arrival of the French and the trade of wine with the native tribes. And then William C. Sterling, of course, had the first, what we would consider, modern winery in the state of Michigan and vineyard. And so this basically is a partnership with Michigan Vineyards and Soda Manufacturers, and will tell the story of the French settlement, as well as generate revenue for the park if it were to move forward. The South Arena, I mentioned briefly, would be utilized as an event venue, and so it's about 22,000 square feet, and would be, you know, subleased on a short-term basis, you know, to other entities and organizations, much like the MBT Expo Center at the Fairgrounds is. The third one that's not up there is a native Great Lakes gift shop, and basically, it's a large expansion of the current gift shop operation at the battlefield, that would bring in Michigan-made and Great Lakes native-made items to broaden the availability of unique gift shop items. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip the roof and let Mark talk about that one, and I will jump to the existing visitor center in sign relocation. Once the new education center and regional visitor center is opened up, we would actually close the existing National Park Visitor Center, prep that for demolition, and move over to the new location. As a part of that, we would like to propose, obviously, relocating the national park signs over to the new property, as well as putting in another low-profile but digital sign that would talk about events and activities that are going on, to better promote out to the community in those coming-by opportunities at the education center and around the battlefield. With that, I'm happy to take questions, or, or call Mark back up here to talk some more also about the roof, so. I think Mark's gonna hit on the other, other topics.
Mark, we'll see if those questions add, a lot of information, a lot of progress.
Yeah. Yep, thank you, and, and Mark, I'll let you talk, and then I'm happy to take questions.
Just a couple comments to add on to what, what Scott had to say. I know, when, when we had the slide up there that showed the amount of funding that the National Park Service has for the battlefield and its base budget, I will say, Scott can't necessarily say it, but we can, that it's pitifully low compared to other urban national parks across the country, and so when the mayor and I are out in Washington and up on Capitol Hill advocating for issues related to the city, park funding is one that we advocate for, because of the reasons that we just saw in terms of the number of visitors that are coming to Monroe, and the number of students that are served at the battlefield. And so, Councilman, to your point about talking about a possible lobbyist for the city a couple weeks ago, I think that is one tool that we could also utilize to help increase the funding that the federal government provides to the, the national park here in Monroe to supplement, supplement the rest of the investment. But going back to Scott's comment about it being loud and noisy at the education center right now, it's also very wet. If you, if you haven't been over there, I would encourage, Scott and I can certainly take you over there and, and give you a tour of sort of what's to come, but it's a good thing you're building canoes, because you might need them to get around the building pretty soon. On rainy days, there are buckets all over the place, there are puddles all over the place in the building, particularly where the glass skylight meets the building. It's, it's hard to adequately state how many puddles and how wet it is, even in the offices upstairs where the staff are working, and so with making the $2 million, almost $2 million investment into the renovations, as Scott just described, we don't want to make those installations, if they're only gonna get poured on and wet and ruined as a result of a leaky roof. So, given the fact it is a, a city-owned or building authority-owned building, we've taken a look at how we can repair and replace the roof to make sure that the investment that we're making isn't ruined, or that the, the, the foundation and park are, are making isn't ruined. And so the building authority has engaged Jim Jacobs Architect to do an assessment of the building and find out just how much it's gonna cost to replace it, and so we've engaged him, also had conversations at the building authority to look at replacing that roof in concert with the investment that's being made on the renovations. It's obviously not gonna be a cheap project, but it's a necessary one due to some of the deferred maintenance, and, and just the fact that the roof is old and, and needs to be taken care of, so Vince, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, other than just, you know, we, as Mark mentioned, Mr. Jacobs will give us an assessment, and then we'll evaluate what the financing alternatives will be, and certainly bring it back to city council to, to go forward. But given the magnitude of the investment, the age of the roof, we're kind of find ourselves at this point, and certainly try and work it within the fixed budget that we have set up for the, for the visitor center and education center there. So, we still have, I think, just a little bit under $100,000 in the general fund at this point, so we'll try and make it work within that framework, so. More to come.
Thanks. So I had an opportunity, it was a week or so ago, to meet with Scott and Chief Ted Rolf from Wyandotte Anor Don on another topic, and it was interesting, as I walked through the complex, and what Mark's stating is correct, so I know that the council's had opportunities, and we've extended opportunities to kind of meet at the facility individually, or get ahold of Mark or Scott, and if you, if that fits with your schedules over the next couple weeks, you may want to take a, a opportunity to do that. I can tell you that the exhibits that are there are, that are completed and getting completed, look great, but they're strategically located on the property, so there's not a place where the water's coming in. So just, it's something that we're, I think we're, as we get into this, beginning this year with our goals and objectives and our review on the budget, we'll have to find some alternatives, because it's, we are now getting to the point where the, the build-out's gonna occur, we have to make sure that we maintain that. So, I know it's conversation for council, but if you can arrange a, a visit, please do so, I know they'll be very accommodating. Any questions, Brian?
A couple more updates, too.
Brian first, then Kelly.
I guess there's something on here about MDR and FEMA grant update. Is there any possibility of using any of that funding to go towards the roof, or is that simply for purchase of property and, and, okay?
Yeah, the FEMA is very restrictive for the properties that are in the floodplain in acquisition, and I guess on that point, with FEMA, there were five properties that we were awarded funding for last year, we've secured appraisals on three of them, and so Land Matters, the firm that we contract with to work on the property acquisitions on our behalf with us, is making outreach to those three individuals, the, the two other properties, we're still continuing discussions with those, but again, it's willing sellers only, so. The DNR is, again, restricted to property acquisition within the, the project area. An update on that, you'll, you'll remember, our point of contact with Land Matters suddenly passed away sadly last year, and so there's been a bit of rebuilding that we've done, and then we ran into the holidays, where not many people want to talk about relocating or moving. And so we're actually in discussions with three property owners right now, and have another three that will be engaged in after that, so, you know, we're continuing to make progress on that. We do have two more homes that are gonna be demolished within the, the next few months, city's doing some demolition work, and those two are going out as part of the bid package with the rest of it, so you'll see two more properties coming down. And so that's the update with the, the DNR and the FEMA project, and then we're continuing to, to engage the rest of the property owners, as well as the Carls Foundation, we got through the National Park Trust. And then the last update that I have is the River Rays and Heritage Corridor Trail. You'll know that in the state park itself, the trail is falling into the water, and, and was closed for a bit last year. I do believe they're letting people on through the rest of the trail right now at their own risk, but it's in serious need of repair. The state is paying for a feasibility study with Manik and Smith to look at how, if we can repair that. The rising lake levels that are only continuing to rise are gonna continue to be an erosion problem on that southern portion of the Heritage Trail. So there is a lot of work going in right now into determining the feasibility, but also SimCOG, the National Park Service, the Fish and Wildlife Service, the city, Community Foundation of Monroe, DNR, and, and Frenchtown Township, are all looking at how we can expand the Heritage Trail right now as well. There's some funding through the Ralph Wilson Foundation that the DNR came down and talked to a group of us about, and so we're looking at how we can connect pedestrians over I-75 on Dixie Highway right now to connect to the trail that's gonna be built as part of the new hospital campus, that will connect with the existing Heritage Trail, the national park property, the fish and wildlife in the state park. And so, we're in the beginning stages of that as well, and just wanted to update you and let you know that those discussions are ongoing to improve, but also expand the Heritage Trail, so.
I know there's a few more questions, but Kelly has a question.
First, can you refresh my memory, because I thought we already talked about replacing the roof?
Yep, we, we brought it to city council previously, that it was gonna be an issue that was gonna be ongoing and coming before us as we, as we looked at what we needed to do to repair it. We had some estimates ranging from, I think, $250,000 all the way up to over $1 million at that time when we came to city council, and so now we're working to find out what is the exact cost, what is the exact scope of work, and that's what we're working with Jim Jacobs on.
And then, when I was out knocking doors during the campaign season, this question came up a couple times. Are you guys gonna do anything on the back of the building that faces the neighborhood to make that more visually attractive? Some of the residents seemed to, they, I wasn't present for the conversation, but they said that there was talk about improving that look back there.
Yeah, you mean at the education center, or the form of all things?
Yes, at the education.
So it is pretty unsightly, and I think we all agree on that, it's a concrete box that served its purpose when it was a multi-sports complex, it also has the old city logo on the front that we would like to have removed. The current funding, the $2 million, were, were really stretched thin with the interior Phase One redevelopment of the building, so there is no exterior work as part of the initial funds, but I know for Phase Two and going forward, paying extra attention to the exterior, making it more attractive, is gonna be part of the plan, and, and that's a good point, of looking at the back of the building as a, as it points to the neighborhood as well. as well.
Michelle, and then I'll, I think John has a question, too.
Is it feasible with the rising lake waters that the Heritage Trail, can we marry the funding for the new Heritage Trail and combine it with the old Heritage Trail to hopefully get some ridges to go? Because it's not going to end. I think our waters are going to continue to rise.
Yeah, we're looking at how we can leverage all these pots of money that we're looking at for each other. So, possibly the trail that Prometica is looking to build on the backside of their property, can it be used as match to match funds that are being used inside the park? There's also discussion about possibly relocating the backside of that trail on the south so it doesn't continually erode, but obviously the costs continue to rise as we look at permanent fixtures and not just Band-Aids. So, all of those things are being looked at, working together.
John? Yeah, the question I have, Mark, is the scope of work that Jacobs is doing, is that going to be a Band-Aid approach, or is that a long-term approach?
It's a long-term approach.
It's a long-term approach.
Okay.
We can't continue to deal with this year after year, especially when we're putting millions on the inside of the building.
Then the other question I have is for Scott, is I didn't, you've kind of integrated it into your update, but can you just kind of go over with council? I noticed that over the years, you've, the National Park has made an effort to integrate the Native American influence that had been in this region, back to this region. Can you kind of tell us what's going on there?
Yeah, so, I mean, the battlefield, obviously, is very unique when it comes to the War of 1812, and this battle was principally between the Native Nations and the United States with Great Britain's support. We had over 18 different tribal groups represented that today represent over 78 federally recognized tribes. This particular area, of course, was inhabited by the Potawatomi, the Ottawa, the Wyandot principally, some Ojibwa. And so, we've worked diligently through the journey towards understanding to reconnect with these tribal groups that once called this their homelands, their ancestral lands, and also to begin helping teachers create curriculum that meets Michigan State content expectations to teach history from a tribal perspective. And so, actually, this summer, we were very fortunate to receive almost $200,000 in funding from the Nottowasipi Huron Band of the Potawatomi. And actually, we appreciate everybody who came out to the Battle of the Wines and Commemoration Event, that Journey Towards Understanding event was actually to support that as well, and its dollars to go into providing teacher professional development in content expectation, lesson plan, curriculum, you'll learning for this summer. Now, we have a partnership with seven federally recognized tribes this summer. All of them will be here in town. It's the Ottawa Tribe of Oklahoma, who are originally from the greater Toledo area and also coming up into Monroe County, especially the Bedford area, around that area and further towards Lake Erie. We're also working with the Eastern Shawnee Tribe, who had property both in Ohio and in Michigan, of course, the Wyandot Nation, the Nottowasipi Huron Band of the Potawatomi, who are the Riverais and Potawatomi that used to occupy this area and the entire Detroit River region, the Saginaw-Chippewa, the Peoria, and who am I missing, Grand Chief?
Miami.
Miami, Miami tribe. And so, and actually, I don't think the Miami are participating, but they were in this area. So, yes, is the short answer. The long answer, I could go on for hours, but.
It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, other questions? Thank you both, and I know that we'll, oh, Brian, I'm sorry.
Another question, Your Honor. I know people are probably thinking this inside their heads already. We're doing a lot of improvements to the inside of the Welcome Center. And I believe you said at a cost of around, was it around $2 million worth of improvements?
It's actually, yeah, it's actually over $2 million if you count the private sector dollars and the grant dollars from the state, the appropriation in the National Park Service dollars. It's probably closer to about 2.7.
Okay. And this is probably a question that's going to come to a lot of residents, is can we use any of that funding to help support the roof, do something towards the roof from that? I understand you want to utilize all of that money for the interior of it, but, you know, if it's going to get wrecked, doesn't it make sense to?
Well, it's a great question, Brian, but unfortunately, it's kind of like the D N R grant dollars, that all the dollars are.
Can't be used, can't be utilized for a roof.
Yeah, specifically for certain pieces of the project. There are dollars that will be spent outside, not much, but we are putting up a section or proposing to put up a section of the fence line on the Godfrey Booger Ron claim that it won't really help with the back of the building. It sort of will help by sidetrack in that area. And then, of course, D T E Foundation has provided funding for the barn construction, assuming that moves forward, which will be outside. But again, it doesn't help with the roof situation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you.
And I'll just reiterate what the mayor mentioned, that Scott and I would be happy to meet more, because this was very brief. The Heritage Corridor Advisory Commission meets this week, and we always have at least two hours on the agenda to talk about everything that's happening. So, if you'd like more info, please reach out, and Scott and I would be happy to meet with you.
Absolutely. We'll get a hard hat, we'll write your name on it and everything, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pastu.
Thank you, Your Honor. Next item is Mr. Green to city council with kind of an update to where we are with the zoning ordinance completion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Pastu, Jeffrey Green, Director of Community Development. Several weeks ago, council asked for an update on the zoning code. So, I wanted to provide you with a little bit of, not only an update and where we're at, but what it kind of looks like at this point in time, because that's, there's been some changes made which we think are good, some are kind of unique, and we'll talk a little bit about those. But first of all, zoning chronology. In January 2018 to January 2019, the Ad Hoc Zoning Committee was formed by council, and we began working with that committee, staff, and a consultant to begin going through and talking about the zoning code, basically taking apart the old zoning code, looking at different issues on that. And every week that we were, every couple of weeks that we would meet, the consultant would come back with some proposals, some ideas, and some things of that sort. As part of that review, in February through about April of 2018, concerned that there might be some changes made to historic properties while we're in the midst of changing the zoning code, there was a proposal that we might create a historic overlay district, and out of that came the Historic Overlay District Ordinance, which was passed by city council in April of that year. And essentially, we were looking at that as possibly a temporary measure, but as we've kind of went through the zoning code and development of that, we're trying to incorporate that into the zoning code that we'll all be looking at approving, hopefully, in the very near future. April through November, city staff, the consultant, and the ad hoc committee continued to meet. And in October of 2018, the first partial draft of the zoning code came back to the city, not all of it, but part of it. November of 2018, a remainder of the code or the draft was sent to the city for review. And from about December to May of 2019, city staff and the ad hoc committee began reviewing the draft, making comments on it, and we were constantly in discussion with the consultant. In May, a revised draft of the zoning code is received by the city at that point. July, staff who began to work on this, comments back to the consultant and provide some information, some feedback to them. In September of 2019, so just a few months ago, the second revision to the city came on the, of the draft code. And September to January of this year, city staff has been revising and editing the zoning code. At this point, we've essentially removed the consultant from the process. One of the reasons was the, when we got the second revision back on the zoning code, this was the second time we'd made comments, and I'll get to that as we go through here, but we were looking at a lot, we felt a lot more time by making comments, getting the comments back from the consultant, only to comment then again on the revisions that were made. At that point, we decided to go in and make that, those changes and do the final updates ourself. Since that time, we've been working with part-time staff, myself, and we now have a full-time assistant in the planning department. So, we are working, we're hoping to complete that in the very not-too-distant future. One of the questions that comes up regarding the zoning code is, well, you know, it seems like it would be very simple to make a word here, change a word there. Well, we had hoped to get that in our draft that came to us in September, that we would simply be tweaking that draft and ready to submit that to council. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case. And if you've ever fooled with a Rubik's Cube, you know, you, one move affects the whole cube, and that's exactly the same with the zoning code. Anytime you change one part of the zoning code, it has the potential to affect other parts of that. So, every time a change is made, every time something is amended, something is revised, then we need to make sure that it fits in the entire zoning code. So, some of the changes to the zoning code that we'll be seeing are new zoning districts. And on your desk, you should have a copy of a table of contents, as well as a precis of the zoning districts that we are now doing. That's a synopsis, a four-page synopsis, and that's just one that we're working on right now. But the new zoning codes or districts, there are 23 districts. That's a lot of districts in a zoning code. But one of the reasons that we wanted to do those, we'll talk a little bit about in an upcoming slide, but we thought that the new zoning districts probably were necessary at this point in time. It introduced, as I said, a four-page precis for each zoning district. So, as someone goes into the zoning code, they're now going to be able to open up to a particular zoning district, and they will essentially have a lot of information at their fingertips in four pages. Requirements for parking, standards that they're going to have to meet, size of lots, all of those types of things are included in those. And so, it makes it a little simpler for people that are on the outside that may not deal with this on a day-to-day basis, and that's really the goal, is to make the zoning code simpler for the public to use. Throughout the zoning code, we've had chapters five and six in the draft that was given to us. We are now combining that into a single standards and supplemental regulations chapter. The historic district chapter is being revised to correct and update the review process and identify the person or body responsible for review and approval. There were some discrepancies in that when we received it from the consultant, although we did adopt it, and we're hoping to update that and make that a little more user-friendly for us. Definitions are, of course, being revised. Definitions not found in the zoning code are being removed, and where required, definitions are being added. You would think that was a basic thing, but we find that in a lot of different codes where you've got a lot of things talked about, and they're not included in definitions, or we have definitions for things that are never in the zoning code, and so, we're trying to remove those. We're basically done with that section, and so, we have about one chapter to go. Definitions are also being cross-referenced in some sections of the code to better facilitate use and interpretation. And definitions are also being revised where inconsistent or in conflict with one another or with another section. And finally, signage, that section of the code, which, as I've talked with all of you previously, causes probably the greatest amount of problem for the, probably a small chapter. We are removing that from the zoning code, and we'll have a freestanding ordinance coming up. And that makes us, it makes it easier for us to change the sign code as opposed to having it into the zoning code where we have to go through a lot more process. So, changes to the zoning classifications, these are just a handful. I'll talk about one in particular, and that's the general commercial, but we've added classifications for mixed use, we've added multiple-family residential, that now includes two-family and up. We have mixed residential uses, a mixed residential district. We have a battlefield area, just talking about the battlefield and the improvements going on there. We have an airport district now, heavy industry. We have identified the port industrial area as a heavy industry area. One of the things that went on was, it was the same as some of our districts along Detroit Avenue, and almost every time that something came to us from the port, from North Star Steel, or, I'm sorry, I just blanked on their name.
For now.
For now. And Detroit Edison, and a lot of the requests that came for us did not fit the zoning standards that we had, simply because everything was much bigger there. And that's one of the reasons that we wanted to go to the port industrial district to allow those bigger uses and the things that are going on there. Also, warehousing district along Huber and Bent, on the, well, Huber Avenue, and residential in the proposed park area, as well as legacy districts. And one of those legacy districts, of course, was the Lazy Boy site, which is being redeveloped. So, this kind of kicked in as we were even doing that. But a little bit about the general commercial, it was divided into three different commercials. That's Monroe Commercial, which is Monroe Street, Dixie Commercial, which, of course, covers Dixie Highway, North Dixie Highway, and Telegraph Commercial. And one of the things, and one of the reasons that we did that, is if you think about either South Monroe Street or North Monroe Street, and the things that are located there, and you think about North Dixie Highway, those were both zoned the same thing. And as you've driven through those, the uses there, the types of businesses there are significantly different from one another. And so, we felt that dividing these up allowed us to identify the nuances that, for each particular area, but which allowed us to specifically address those. So, on North Dixie Highway, we have uses that are a little more intense, they're auto-oriented, whereas on North Dixie, or on North Monroe Street, there might be retail and commercial uses. On South Monroe Street, there might be some, a lot of pedestrian-related uses. And so, we wanted, in this dividing these up, we wanted to be able to address those uses specifically. The first draft that we had of the code, and that was the one that would have come in, I want to say about May, we began looking at, and really, what I'm showing here is the red circles is what I want you to look at, and not so much the text. Next page, it identifies a number of red circles. All of these red circles identify notes that were on this that we sent back to the consultant. A lot of times, we were asking for clarification, we were asking questions about why it was there, we were asking for, to provide us with more information. And the consultant, basically, on a lot of these, simply removed that. Whatever section we asked about was gone. We didn't have to ask about it, it was no longer there. We were happy with that response, and as we began going through, this is actually my draft, and you can see a little bit of it, and really what I was wanting to show you were the scribblings, because the, some of the things that came up in the top left-hand corner up here, it's got R1C, single-family, and then in the blue band, it's got R1A that was sent to us. Down below, we have 30-foot minimum-wide lots. None of our lots in the city are 30-foot wide that are legal in zoning codes today. The area here where I've got an arrow back and forth, we've got a 25-foot secondary street frontage. The note below says the secondary street frontage is 15 feet. And these are the types of things that we ran into, and really why we decided to go back rather than go through this again, send it back to the consultant. We decided that we would work on it in-house and have been going through that. Sometimes it's tedious work, sometimes it's slow, and I know everyone is wondering, well, when we're going to get this done? We have been making substantial progress on it, but again, as I said, it's a lot like Rubik's Cube. When you make one move of that cube, it shifts things throughout the rest of the document. So, essentially, the proposed document is what you have in front of you now. It's known as R3. We've changed it from R1C to an R3 district, and we've cleaned up a lot of the language in there. The photo has got to go. That's one of the things that we also talked with the consultants about, is they put in a lot of stock photos rather than photos of Monroe, and we want to have photos of Monroe. In this particular case, the one that I've X-ed out doesn't even match the zoning district that it's in. And so, these are the types of things that we don't want to have photographs that do not match the zoning district and the characteristics that we call out in that. Again, going through this, we've divided up permitted and special uses. Parking areas, one of the things that we found with the consultant was, they had a split. Sometimes they'd have whole numbers for parking, one car per, sometimes they'd come back with a decimal, .3% of a car for so many hundreds of square feet. What we wanted them to do was make it simple for people that were going to be looking at this for a first time, and that was whole numbers. It's one spot per 100 feet, two spots per 1,000, whatever it might be. And over here on the, on the right, the standards, we had to go through and make sure all the standards corresponded correctly to the standards that are called out in the rest of the document. And again, there's the parking. We've, we've created, went back and really straightened up, cleaned up all of the dimensional regulations and standards so that they're correct. We've went back through front yard minimum setbacks, made sure all those are correct throughout the document. And then, just going on, again, as you can see in your particular copy that you have, it's just kind of cleaning these all up so that it is a document, I think, that will be ready to use. It will be a document that is going to be, I think, a very good document when finished. But again, it's taken a little bit of time. We expect to be finishing up probably within the next 30 days or so. We are very, very close to doing that, and unfortunately, we've had a few setbacks, personal setbacks, where. And unfortunately, we've had a few setbacks, personal setbacks, where we've not been able to get people scheduled together to work, and that's, we found that the working as a group tends to come out really well. We have a lot of feedback. We have someone from the building department, we have a consultant that works with us on planning, we have our two assistants, our planning assistant and our community development assistant, that are working with us. And so we get a lot of feedback when we're doing this, and I think that works out really well, because we're able to bounce ideas off, we're able to ask questions, we're able to debate whether we need this or not, does it make sense, doesn't it make sense? So that's kind of the quick part of it. I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Andrew.
There are not many of them, but there are several. Thank you, Brian. But there are several lots in the city that split jurisdictions between the city of Monroe and one of our surrounding townships. Do we anticipate that any of the changes made here are going to conflict with how those lots are, are zoned in the city and how they're zoned in, in their respective townships?
No, I don't think so. And I'm assuming you're asking, are we going to put an industrial district next to a residential district in the township?
We now, how, our change of classification is, is not going to mesh with the classification that it's listed as in the township for the same lot?
No, I, I think they should mesh very well.
Okay.
Yeah.
John?
Estimate of timeframe?
I'm hoping within 30 days to have it back out. Again, we're down to about a chapter and a half. We've already went through the definitions, and, and so we're in the administration portion of the chapter, which sometimes is, is a difficult one to get through, as you know. Again, we came back and decided to combine the regulations and the two chapters, five and six. And when we do that, we now have to make sure everything is meshed, and we're trying to make sure that it's in alphabetical order and all those kinds of things, which, again, makes it simpler to go through. But we thought that putting the chapters together made a lot more sense than having two separate chapters where people are flipping back and forth, looking for an answer and going back from one to another. But I'm hoping about 30 days. I really am. It's, it's been a long process.
Has the planning commission been involved in terms of reviewing the drafts as you're...
We have provided them with updates. They have not reviewed the draft at this point in time, just because, again, we wanted to get it in some sort of shape where they could look at something without having, again, a lot of errors, a lot of things that haven't been corrected. And as we're going through, we're making those corrections. I know the manager has stopped in a couple of times, and we're actually working on one of the smart boards where we're making changes and, and editing as we work along this. This is not sitting and going back and writing and, and doing the scribbling like we did originally and, and doing the markups, but we're actually making those changes right on the board as we go through and we work the project out, what makes sense. We're, we're doing wording, we're doing editing, we're, we're doing the gra, the grammatical changes to it as we go through it. So some days, it goes along very quickly, and, and we make a lot of headway, and there's other days when certain sections will take us an hour or more to kind of get through, but.
So from a timeframe point of view, if it's going to take you another 30 days, that'll take you through February. Planning commission's got to take a look at it, they have to schedule a public hearing, and then it has to come before council. So it's really not going to get on the council docket probably until May?
I would hope to have it to the CPC in February, possibly, if we can make that. And that would be a draft, again, but we would, we would be, I, I'm hoping that we'll be able to get to that point. But yeah, if it, if it doesn't, then it's going to have to go to the planning commission in, in probably March, and then from March back to April here, it could be back to the council in April.
Okay.
Other questions? Thanks for the update, Jeff. I know that from the committee and all the work that it's done, kind of got to a standstill, but from there, we, I know, has moved forward with a lot of the changes that you just presented and the detail work that needs to be done, so thank you. Mr. Pastu, I know we're looking, we have about 15 minutes, I know you have some topics you want to review quickly, or at least thoroughly.
Mr. Leroy's going to talk a little bit about the water system intergovernmental agreements. We have an item with Exeter Township, that, two items actually tonight, memorandum of understanding, as well as an engineering proposal for the design. So I'll let Barry go through it, and it looks like he's going to start with the city of Petersburg. Is that the first one you want?
I can do Petersburg first.
That's fine, you can do that one, and then come back to the other, if you have them on separate.
Okay. Mayor Council, Barry Leroy, Director of Water for the city. Here tonight to give you an overview real quick on the city of Petersburg. They are, they are looking at taking out a large loan over a four-year from the USDA to replace all their water main pipe, valves, hydrants, services and meters. They're estimating about $5.5 million. And they're looking at about a three-year time to do the work. And I'm told the funds are allocated, but they are currently in their referendum period right now. Currently, we have a water agreement with them, we serve them wholesale water. And their max day is about 137,000 gallons per day. They're allocated up to 250 in our agreement. They're currently, the agreement is through 2030, and their current charge, I think I have up there, can you go back a page? There you go. Yep. Their current charge is $2.16 for every 100 cubic feet. They have several operational and quality requirements, which are, aren't really applicable here. So they have approached us to extend the agreement because the USDA loan requires source water in the agreement for their loan period. Again, they're in their current referendum period, where mid-May, or mid, excuse me, February, they're expecting to be done with that. And, you know, if they don't get any comments back, then they'll likely move forward with the project. If they do, then they'll have to put it on a ballot. They've requested the city to extend the water agreement through 2070 to give us, give them enough time to pay it back and have, to meet that requirement for the loan. They are currently not asking for any capacity increases based on their max day, they don't expect that much increase at this point, so they could always circle back and make a request in the future that, that became necessary. So we're proposing a First Amendment agreement, or a First Amendment to the water agreement. We're currently performing a cost-of-service study to just verify that the water rates that were charged to them are applicable. Currently, they're charged what a city customer gets charged, plus the repumping fee. And so we're currently in the middle of that right now. We're also going to probably request a provision to put into the agreement for analyzing that rate every five years or so, just to make sure that it's in line. And again, 2070 is the extension. So going to the schedule, so we're currently presenting it tonight. The loan referendum expires at mid-February. We will complete that cost-of-service study, and I'll be working with the city manager on that and city administration, and then we'll start working on developing the, the agreement. I expect to provide at the Petersburg where they would likely review and approve that in March of this year, and then bring it back to city council for review and a consideration at a future meeting. So, is there any questions with that? It's pretty short right now, but just kind of came up in the last month and a half.
Just, just very, very brief, you know, we support the project that they're looking at. I mean, it's a pretty aggressive rebuild of their distribution system, no changes in the capacity that they're requesting of us. And I think the other part of it is, you know, we're, we'll build into it a review of what the cost of it is for us to, you know, provide them the wholesale water, you know, 16 cents, 40 years from now would probably be a little different. So we've got a mechanism in place to ongoing evaluate it so that the rest of the system isn't subsidizing, you know, the sale of water to, to Petersburg. And so, you know, we've got a study going, and as Mr. Leroy indicated, that, you know, we'll have that back probably in February for further discussion, so.
Next one.
Up next is Exeter Township memorandum of understanding for this Razor Street water main loop. I previously was here presenting that project back in September of 2019, and since then, a lot of things have happened, if you recall. Exeter Township requested the city to help them close some of their dead-end water mains throughout the township using surplus system development fees. And that was being collected and allocated and tracked, and we still are tracking it for their buying capacity from past water projects. We recommend the project of the water department because it meets our goals and objectives. It addresses primarily water loss, and it's included in our future asset management plan. Next slide. Yeah, that's just a quick snapshot again of the project where it's at. It's right on the edge of the Village of Mabye, and it's, connects up to Schofield Road. Excellent, thanks. So this is what the memorandum of understanding, which is on the council agenda for tonight for consideration. The water to fund would front the project costs. We would then schedule it within one year to survey, design, construct and commission a, the project. The funding is, as outlined, it's estimated about 457,000 at this point. The, we'll give a credit for the surplus system development fees as well as a flushing credit. And then Exeter Township within 60 days would pay us $30,000 in cash. The balance, that's estimated at this point, is about 163,000. We would collect that through system development fees over the next 10 years. If that, if we don't collect that, then we have a five-year surcharge period that we can then charge their residents if we need to, to pay that back to the city water funds. We don't really expect that. We've been collecting on average about $30,000 a year in system development fees from those districts, so we expect this to be about a five-to-six-year payback period. We did talk about the surcharge, that's just a quick mechanism, like $10 a bill, so about $40 a year. That would generate about $25,000 a year to help pay it back if we needed to get to that point. There are, so the project is what's considered a non-districted area out in the township, and Exeter Township has already taken the steps and established an ordinance to help collect assessment fees to help contribute to paying back the funds if they, if they need to get to that point. We also are requesting a provision in the MOU to extend their water agreement to 2050 to help a lot of this timeframe to transition and to solidify the agreement. So from a schedule standpoint, we are currently in January, where city council is considering the MOU, which is on tonight's agenda. Also on tonight's agenda is a proposal from a consultant to help us with survey, design, and to construct the project once the funds become allocated. So with that, is there any questions at this point?
Andrew.
Thank you, Your Honor. What is the anticipated annual operational savings of the installation of the auto flushers?
Let's see, it's about, I'm trying to remember the numbers, it was about $1,600, $1,700 a year. Yeah.
Is the 15, is, is the $50,000 credit just that amount prorated through the 2050?
Right. I actually had a higher number, and then I had our finance director take a look at it, and he estimated it to be at about $50,000. So yeah.
You're too generous, Barry.
Right. So, yes, that's based on the cost to pump and treat the water to get it out there, so.
Right.
Yeah, do you have some things in place to, for the next, was it 40, 30 years, I'm sorry, that are going to make sure that the cost is correct, some kind of, like we did with, what you're doing with Petersburg?
Oh, as far as the rates?
Rates.
So as far, I mean, that's like, so we're collecting system development fees to help pay for the project. Yeah, so we, we check that every year during budget review and recommend to city council for consideration of establishing what the buy-in cost would be, as long as, as well as the rates. So, you know, if we got to the point where a surcharge may be applicable, that would probably be showing up as a, during a budget review for consideration for council to address that.
Your Honor.
Yes, John.
We don't sell Exeter wholesale water, they're just part of our system, aren't they?
They're a retail customer.
They're a retail customer, whereas Petersburg is a wholesale customer.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Dundee's a wholesale customer.
Dundee is a wholesale customer, yes. So they have a master meter, and then we provide them potable water, meeting certain water quality requirements, and, and they, it becomes their system, and they take ownership of that.
So I, I think to get at Councilman Lamore's question is, in Exeter, their water rates are analyzed every year like our, our water rates are because they're a retail customer.
Right.
And then the wholesale customers, you have it in the MOU, that every five years, you guys could go through a study to see if that, that gets the multiplier gets bumped up. Yeah.
Yeah, our water agreement is currently 2.0, two times the city rate, that's by water agreement.
Pastor, any further?
This item, Your Honor.
We have about two minutes, so I don't know how we're going to get through the last two. But I, I'm, I'm certain that, at the conclusion of the council meeting, your time maybe, or...
Yeah, I think, you know, certainly, you know, related to the police station and capital improvements ad hoc committee, when you get to the manager's comments, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that, as well as, you know, the public safety assessment and the next steps with that. And, and we could certainly cover the budget amendments during the item on the agenda, so I think we're fine.
I think that'll work that way.
Yep.
So we get through them all. So with that, I know that we're at that moment, so going to close the work session so we can have those seats and our guests come in, and we'll go from there.